All right, welcome to the Eastern School Committee meeting on Thursday, April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. I'm gonna call the meeting to order per state of emergency brought on by COVID nineteen pandemic. That allows public bodies to meet remotely. If you have a question, please email it. Is that right, Chrissy? Yep, please email to.
No, we can't, we can't find the chat right now, Alicia. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Go ahead Nancy.
Email your question to C P R U I T T at. Eastern dot K twelve dot M A dot U S. If you have any questions, and then Chrissy Pruitt will send them along to us. And then, so we're, we're on the Zoom feature of our Eastern School Committee that we can use now. Okay, so welcome. The, we have minutes to approve.
I'm sorry Nancy, can you also just remind everyone that this is being recorded? So if they participate at all, they know they're being recorded.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chrissy just said, you're being recorded. I believe this is on FaceTime. Is this on FaceTime Live? Go.
Uh, yes, this is on Facebook Live as well.
Facebook Live, okay, thank you. Facebook Live, and you're being recorded, and the whole world knows us and what we're doing. Okay. First up, we're gonna look at the minutes of March twelfth. Does anybody have any comments or corrections or questions?
Give him a minute.
March twelfth.
This is Jen, I had no, no edits.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'm looking, there's one that I do, and I'm trying to remember which day it was.
Yeah, cuz we have two, we have either April seventh or March twelfth. March twelfth was the end of life as we knew it.
I do not think it's on that one.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
Some of.
That's Caroline O'Neill.
Yes, Caroline O'Neill, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Jen's second.
Jen's second, all those in favor, by roll call, start with Caroline.
Caroline O'Neill, yes.
Durant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
So, thank you, and that means that the March twelfth minutes are unanimously voted on. Okay, now we have the minutes of April seventh. Any comments, corrections, or anything else for April seventh? Michelle?
Yeah, there, one of these in my comments, the school committee comments, they spelt Dr. Cabral.
Oh, I see, yeah, on page five.
Yeah, C A B hyphen R A L, that just needs to be fixed. Is it page five?
Page five, paragraph two.
Second, second.
Yes.
Wow, Michelle, you're turning into the new Caroline.
I found one correctly. I have nothing else other than that.
Okay, so Jen, anything from you?
No, nope, everything.
Jackie?
No.
Caroline?
No, I'm retiring from my grammar police role.
Michelle? Anything else?
No.
Okay, I have nothing. So, I will make a motion to accept Tuesday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty, school committee meeting minutes.
With edit.
Second.
Okay, Jackie's the second, okay, all those in favor?
Caroline O'Neill, yes.
Durant's, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Thank you, and so that's unanimous for that. Okay, thanks ladies. Okay. Dr. Cabral, COVID nineteen update.
Okay, thank you. So, in terms of, obviously, we've had a pivot again in terms of academics. I'll have Assistant Superintendent Chrissy Pruitt speak about that after I highlight a couple of other things that have happened. We did talk about a weekly summary for you guys, and I started working on it, and it turned into my notes for tonight. So I, I realized I'm kind of seeing you every week, so I didn't, maybe I can get guidance on that later. If you would like notes before our meeting, or I'm not sure. I thought Friday each week would be good, but I seem to be seeing you at the end of each week. So, I don't think I'll have much for Monday, for example, for you. So, and maybe we can just, we, like, discuss that again or something. In a minute, but first of all, we have come up with some essential personnel guidelines. We had some that went out on April second, but we have updated that. Out of really an abundance of caution, we kept the buildings really empty. And we even reduced hours of custodians to make sure that everybody was out and cleared, and we didn't have any spaces that were compromised, we had disinfected all the classrooms. So we only had food service there for grab and go at one school. What we had done in the interim was provide professional development for everybody. So custodians, everybody has had professional development, if they're not working on learning plans, of course, or something else like that. So, we have now decided, we've gotten guidance from M I I A, our insurers, that essential personnel can be, can start coming back into the building. And so, we are sending, I actually sent that information out prior to this meeting. We are going to have food service through the grab and go, custodians are gonna be coming in and doing repairs, and work that they usually start in the summer, they're gonna be able to start that now. We also have some clerical aides coming in to do what is typical this time of year. For example, ordering supplies for next year, they need to do an inventory of what's left over now, and then modify their order for next year, they'll be doing that. We're also getting report cards out this year for the third quarter, and so they're gonna be working on the ones that need to be printed. Six to twelve, they're doing that electronically, but there are always some that need to be printed. And PK to five, they're gonna be printed and sent. So they're working on all of that, and some other duties for, for the principals. Central office staff has been going in, and will continue to do that as well. We have, what I did today was send the, that information, I just like to keep the entire staff up to date of what's going on, whether they're in the essential employee or essential personnel category right now or not. And then we send along an updated document of essential employee guidelines. So you should have received that as well. And it, it talks, of course, about social distancing. I put in a reminder in there from the town that there is a mask requirement now. Certainly, our staff is not gonna need masks because we have them separated ten feet or more. However, if they feel as though they want one, we are providing them for those that are coming in. And so that will commence, there were a couple of people who went in today, but primarily that's commencing next week, which is the week we were supposed to be going back to school initially. Next, I wanted to let you know about some planning that we've been doing. I met with the wonderful senior class advisors and the wonderful senior class officers this Wednesday. Myself, the business manager, Principal Paul. And we just, we wanted to hear from them about some of the direction they wanted us to take with their events coming up, including graduation. As you can imagine, it's very discouraging for them to keep having things canceled and rebooked and be unknown about things. So, we just, we did discuss having a set graduation date for August first, so that they weren't wondering what was gonna keep happening. So, we did set a date for August first, we have reserved Frothingham Park. If for some reason, however, it is not, we are not able to have a group of people get together, we have a modified plan, which includes just the graduates being there, spread apart and being filmed. And then we also have a completely virtual option. And what we will do is, regardless, August first will be graduation date, unless we hear otherwise from anyone else. That is our plan going forward, and if it is absolutely impossible to, I'm sure we'll know at least a week ahead i- if we can get together or not. If we have to have a hybrid version, we have that ready. And if we can't get together at all, we're gonna have that ready. So, people who are delivering speeches are gonna have, we're preparing those in advance. Students are gonna be in their caps and gowns, doing short clips of themselves, and it's all gonna be coordinated and ready for August first. So that is pending any other direction, that is going to be our plan going forward, unless any school committee members have a concern about that. They also had had, everything else has been put on, or is going to be virtual. So, class night and monogram awards and senior night, those are all being recorded. So we don't have to worry about rescheduling those. However, they did have a senior cruise planned on the Odyssey in Boston. And so they did ask if around graduation week, either right before our graduation day or right after our graduation day, if they could reschedule that. And so they were working on doing that. Obviously, if we are in a situation similar to now and they can't get together, they're well aware that they would need to cancel that. I did tell them, I have checked on liability and insurance and just legal matters in terms of holding on to their money for them. We can't do that aft, past the summer. So I know that some people had talked about, or some districts have talked about, perhaps getting seniors together next year, whether it's next summer or Thanksgiving, when a lot of kids come home from college. But we won't be able to do that. However, we told them that because they canceled their prom, which I'll also talk about in a second, they canceled their prom, it was quite expensive, so there's a good amount of money that's gonna be refunded, fortunately. They had that refunded. I think they made a good decision, because if they reschedule it, sometimes vendors, I'm sure some of you are aware, it depends on the, it depends on the venue and the vendor, whether they consider it to be either state of emergency, or, you know, my god, my godson was scheduled to be married in July, and they said that no weddings over fifty people. And so the venue won't return his money, cuz they said, well, we can still have it, just can have under fifty people. So sometimes there are those technicalities. So, they wisely, I think, chose to cancel it so that they could get all of their money back. And so we have committed to them that if it is possible to have something like that, again, during that week, that we certainly could look at the, the beneficial area, the things that we have in town, right? The, the national treasures that we have in town, whether it's Oakseam's Hall or even our own school, there are a lot of things that we can do to make it very special for them. And we can do that quickly, and we can do it very inexpensively. So that means that they would have a good deal of their money left over, and of course, we would transfer them. We discussed the logistics to them, how we would transfer that at the end of the summer. And then they could have a nice little account to get them started, and however the class wants to do that, it can help them for subsequent reunions. They can decide to have some sort of event next summer, they would do that on their own, though. And they would have a little bit of money to help them do that. So, what I did try to point out to them, though, and it was kind of funny, because, you know, I could picture my eighteen-year-old self sitting there listening to someone. I tried to tell them that I knew for a fact they weren't gonna know what the heck I was talking about when I said it. But having the benefit, I guess, of being old and having that lens, that, you know, if I could go back right now, I would much, I would be so excited and thankful to have really like a professionally curated video of my graduation to remember it by. I probably remember about six seconds of my graduation from high school, and I think it was probably my dress, cuz that was the most important thing to me on that day. It just, there are different things that different people remember, and, you know, when you get a lot older, there's, it gets a lot harder to remember details like that. So, I said, you know, they may end up, I certainly didn't wanna minimize their sense of loss with this, and so we are working very hard to make sure that they have great opportunities. But I said, there might be some silver linings here, and one might have a wonderful memento of their graduation and of all these events that really nobody else is ever gonna have. We, we've never done these things for anybody else before, so they may, they may appreciate those somewhere down the line. I'm sure they don't see that quite yet, but somewhere down the line, they might appreciate having that. I also wanted to update you on some logistical things. We have, if it's okay with you, cuz I have not confirmed this with any unions yet. I would like to, we've assessed, for example, the, all of the refunds that we're gonna be doing. So, we did refund the last payment for all K and pre-K, which I talked about this already before, but we, we actually did it since the last time I talked to you. So, all the pre-K and K parents are receiving their last payment back if they paid, or obviously, we're not collecting it if they have not yet paid. That's about a thousand dollars, and it's a huge hit for us, obviously. But, and, and students are getting remote learning, but it's, it's just, it's not the same thing. In first grade, second grade, third grade, students don't have to pay to go to school. So, it, it was a very difficult decision, we tried to do what we thought was fair for everyone, and so that's what we settled on. In terms of activities, we've gone through all of the activities with the principals and had them identify one by one which activities hadn't had any events or practices or meetings or things like that. We've identified, I think, one, and we're still checking on that. But because all the other ones had had year-long activities going on, we did not find any yet that we're going to be refunding activity fees. So the pre-K to six activity fee, we're not refunding, but, because those students have had their activities. But the activities fees for the older kids, we're also not refunding, because all of the advisors have assured us that the kids have had a good deal of their activities completed before we left school. Sports, we, we're refunding all the sports fees, because obviously, there, we didn't even have one practice. However, head coaches do do a lot of preseason work, they do some uniform ordering and supplies, and they meet with the athletic director. So we did settle on, for head coaches only, ten percent of that stipend, and just for the head coaches. So, we've really tried to be as, as fair as we can under the circumstances. We had to hurry up and make those decisions, because we really can't plan the rest of FY twenty or even decide how we're gonna prepay for FY twenty-one unless we have, unless we know what's available to us. So we think we're all set with all of that, again, unless there are objections or concerns about that. What else here? I did wanna let you know something, some good news. We are very, you know, John Morley, our friend from the Eastern Bank, they actually unsolicited approached Ann Weintraub, who's running the grab and go food distribution at the Richardson Homestead School, and gave that, gave her fifteen fifty-dollar gift, supermarket gift cards to hand out at the grab and go. And people have been, as you can imagine, extremely, extremely appreciative of that. So, the grab and go is for breakfast and lunch only, and it's only for children. We, we do include all children, not just school-aged children, so toddlers, for example, we do include them. But it does include families, it doesn't include senior citizens, and obviously, it doesn't include things to actually make meals. It doesn't include cleaning supplies, things like that. So, we thought that, of course, that was extremely generous, and the, the, the thanks and expressions of gratitude were really heartwarming. Well, they came back and gave fifteen more. So, now we have handed out thirty of those. So I, I wanted, I really wanted to make sure that they were acknowledged for that incredible generosity. The other, it actually brought to us, though, a question, because as we were refunding kindergarten money, some people did ask about donating money, like donating their last kindergarten payment, for example. Which, of course, would be very helpful to us, but we really weren't sure how to handle that, or if that was something that the school committee even wanted to do. So we, I, I wanted to bring that to you for some direction. We're not soliciting donations, of course, but it, when people have asked us, we really weren't sure. I mean, Marilyn can set up an account, of course, if it's kindergarten, for example, she can just leave it in the kindergarten line. But we weren't really sure if that was something you wanted us to accept from people. Because you, we, we do go, you know, we accept all donations from you, we can't do that every time that someone does that. So if it were of that nature, I guess we're looking for some direction on, on whether that's something you wanted us to accept and in some way, report back to you or not, or just consider that part of the operational budget. We're, I'm looking for input on that part of it. And that's all I have for the COVID update, unless you have any questions before I switch it over to Chrissy. So before I do do that academic part, if you wanted to ask me any questions about that information or offer input about the donations, that would be appreciated.
Okay, Caroline, you'll be first.
Well, of course, I think we should welcome any donations, and I'm, I'm really so touched by the fact that families have, have chosen to take that option in many cases. I just wanna make sure we have all of the, you know, legal pieces in place. I know that the school committee usually has to vote to accept donations, but maybe not in this kind of circumstance. I just don't know, I'm just kind of asking that question.
Well, the, the acceptance of donations, that's a school committee policy, and you, you know, it was of a certain amount.
Yeah, I couldn't remember the amount.
So it's up to you if that's something that you wanted us to bring for your.
I, I don't feel any need for that at all, I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, within the, you know, constraints of our own policies and of any kind of legal issues or legal concerns, that's all. I mean, I'm, I think it's wonderful, and I would say, definitely go for it. I think that's a great idea, and so much appreciation for those families that are thoughtful in that way. I just wanna mention something completely out of, now, it sounds like there's no more kind of chatting or laughing in the background, but there was earlier, it sounds like, from maybe other participants, I mean, other people that are attending the meeting.
Oh, I didn't even hear that, it's not in my house.
Did other people hear that?
Nobody laughed in my house.
No, 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 I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about for us, I'm talking about the people attending the meeting, the people.
I'm sorry, were you having trouble hearing?
No, I, it, it was just kind of distracting to hear some people laughing and chatting. No, it's not, it's not in any, any school committee members or you or Chrissy, it's apparently in the, the audience, so.
Okay, we, we took care of it.
Okay, thank you, Chrissy. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I didn't even, I didn't even pick up on it.
I didn't hear it either.
They were interfering with your talk, so that's why I was concerned. Thank you.
Michelle?
Alicia, could you tell me again, which bank did the gift card donation? Sorry.
It's okay. Bank of Eastern?
Bank of Eastern, thank you, that was very generous.
John Morley.
He was, you know, president of, he was president of FEED for years, and he's just been such a generous donor to the schools for literally decades, just incredible. Yes, yes.
That's a huge thank you to him, and the Bank of Eastern. I agree with Caroline, I haven't, I think it's wonderful if people are feeling that they want to donate tuition money. I do have a question, what would it go towards, like, if they donated, would it?
If it was K tuition, it would go in the K line, and it would only be used for kindergarten, for example.
For expenses to help somebody with a scholarship, or?
No, actually, our K line is very far in the red right now, because tuitions pay for half of all kindergarten teachers. And so because we have kept teachers on staff, and we don't have all the revenue, we are actually in the red.
And then also, my only concern would be is if we had to vote on it, so I thought it was something over five hundred. Was, is that the dollar figure that we have? I don't feel the need to vote on it unless that's something legally we have to.
Yeah, I just don't remember, and I don't have the policy book at my side here, so.
I'm almost thinking it was five hundred, but.
Hmm, I think it was more than that.
I think it was more also, but I, I don't know the figure. I, I don't, I do think it was more, and, and if you have smaller donations that are, you know, in several different parts, I think we're probably fine. It's also, I don't think anybody's going to question our accepting donations to provide families with food. I mean, I just, I think it's wonderful. And, and also the tuition, and, 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 you know, not expecting a refund for some, for tuition. I think those are such generous gestures that I can't imagine anyone questioning them.
I do have a question that I've been asked to ask, and I'm not sure where it fits in here. It's about the seniors' last day, I don't know if that's something, cuz it's sort of COVID, a result of COVID, or if you want me to save the question for my comments, or?
No, that's fine.
So I've tried to explain it, but there seems to be a lot of confusion about why the seniors' last day is the twenty-ninth, when we had, had decided to work through April vacation, which moves back everyone else to the fifteenth. And why were the seniors not affected by that, why did they not get dates moved back? And maybe you can explain it.
Sure. So. So by law, we can't have seniors leave school be twelve, more than twelve days before our graduation date that we set. So whether it was, whether we have that graduation or not, it, it still was set. And so they are still going to the twenty-ninth, like they were supposed to. That's the day that, or that's the week that would have been final exams. And so what we're doing is, and obviously, we aren't having final exams, and so what they're doing is having a series of some senior events that week.
So was that based then on the June seventh date?
Yes.
So does that change now that graduation isn't technically until August first?
Nope, it's your scheduled graduation date.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But Michelle, you're asking about the last day for seniors, are you looking for something to happen on May twenty-ninth, like a senior day of some kind?
No, I, I think that the question had been asked of me is, is why their end date did not change when we, when we decided to work through April vacation, and we changed everyone else back four days. And I explained about the, the seniors' last, that would be technically their last final day, but I didn't really have a better explanation, I didn't realize that there was a law about the twelve days.
Yeah, and we didn't, we didn't move everybody back four days, we just didn't have them do their snow days. That's all, those, those four days were snow days.
And if I could just clarify, the, the, the law is that the seniors ha, can't have their last full day, twelve days prior to the last scheduled day of school. And with the twenty-ninth, that kept us in the range. Now, that was originally, we were counting finals, which we are allowed to do, as the last day for seniors. Because there's no finals, we technically can't go the twenty-eighth or the twenty-seventh according to law. So, our original last day of school was the twelfth, and so that's, that's where.
June twelfth for everyone.
June twelfth, thank you, yeah, that's where it comes in. And so that's why, even with the cancellation of finals, we weren't allowed to move the date back according to the law. That actually, coordinated program review, full, fresh, still on my mind. I know that that's, that's definitely something that, that we had to note and count and show evidence for and everything.
We got cited for that two years ago.
Yeah, and I think that the, you know, the staff at the high school are very cognizant of what, as we all are too, of what should have, what the seniors should have been, you know, what they, what they had been anticipating for. So I can pretty much guarantee that there's going to be a lot of fun things planned for that next, for that last week.
Yeah, there is, there is. We, we don't really wanna say a lot about that, we just need people to.
All right, no, I appreciate the explanation, I promised that I would ask for clarification.
I appreciate the fact that there are pre-K and K parents that do wanna donate their tuition money to the school department. I think that's wonderful, but I don't want people to feel bad that they can't, cuz I know a lot of people.
No, and we're not asking, yeah.
No, I know, but I'm just, you know, whichever you decide to do, do what's best for your family. And speaking of donations, I know we had talked about this, I don't know if it was at a meeting or just amongst, in our emails, talking about a refund, not a refund, a donation for the musical. Cuz I know they had a lot of bills for the play this year that didn't happen. Do you have any more updates on the musical, or does anybody? Because my son got the refund for his tickets, and, excuse me, and he's like, why didn't they just keep it and put it towards the play? And I said, well, there's something going on. So when I find out, I'll let you know. So do you know? Does anybody know?
No, it's the same thing. We have to refund when we don't provide a service. If people want to donate that, that's up to them, but we're not asking for donations. We don't feel it's appropriate time to ask for donations right now. And just so everyone knows, the, um, the musical's not out. It's not, they're not a separate entity. They're the school department. So they're not out money, like not, the music department isn't out money. That's the school department. So that's something that we absorb as a school department. So they're going to be fine. It's the school department. Yeah.
So if, so if people wanted to donate their ticket back to the school department to go towards paying the bills that have to be paid for the musical, they could do that.
Yes, but we're not asking anyone to donate, just like kindergarten, just like the tuition, same thing.
All right, because it was kind of out in space out there. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Jackie?
No, I agree. I think any, any donations that are given to us, we're happy to accept and very grateful for. And I, I don't think for these amounts, we should have to vote on them.
Thank you. Ja, uh, Jen?
Yep, I, I agree with, um, you know, if we have to vote, maybe we could just do a, a blanket acceptance of, um, of donations from, you know, families who are in a position to, to donate that fee. Uh, very grateful. We're certainly not in a position to be turning, um, any funds away, especially knowing that they would go towards expenditures that have to be made, keep staff on. So again, really, really appreciate the thoughtfulness of the families who are in a position um, to, to donate the, that tuition back to.
So do you want to do that right now? Do you guys, do you want to, um, make a vote right now that any donations, Bank of Easton, kindergarten, anything that we get, we most gratefully accept into these?
Jackie, I mean, Nancy, I think that would have to be on the agenda. I don't, I don't think we can take a vote without it being on the agenda. I mean, it's a great idea, but you know, we have that constraint about.
Maybe in our next meeting.
Posting of the agenda, right. I think it's a good idea. Yeah, Michelle's right. Maybe the next meeting.
Yeah, maybe we can add a, a vote there.
Right, right. Retroactively and going forward.
I think the next meeting is May eighth. So we'll put that on the agenda for May eighth.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you, Dr. Cabral and everybody.
We have some questions from the, um, from the group.
Go ahead, Chrissy.
So Becky Fleming asked, when is communication being sent out to seniors about the prom cancellation?
So we didn't cancel the prom. That's something that the senior class does. So the senior class communicates to their class about those things.
Okay. Um, she also asked a follow-up comment and question.
Sure.
Um, there's not enough communication to seniors and we need to know what the specific schedule is sooner rather than later. Many seniors working different hours due to the remote learning schedule, these students need to request time off. When will the seniors get the schedule?
What's, uh, which schedule? I'm sorry. I'm not sure which. I'm not sure which schedule, sorry.
Okay.
Can we unmute Becky if she's on and ask her to clarify?
Um, I have her here. Okay, I think she's unmuted. Go ahead.
Yep, sorry, that was confusing. So.
No problem.
Uh, you just mentioned a very, some very special secret events for the seniors. And I think it's wonderful, but we, we need to make sure that they're all able to participate. So when will the specific hours for that schedule be announced?
Uh, well, I didn't, I didn't say they were secret. It's just that the school is working on them and they are taking place the last five days of school. So as long as they're in school from May twenty fifth to May twenty ninth, they're all set. It's nothing outside of school.
Well, I mean, let's be realistic. The remote schedule is pretty light. So it's great for kids who have part-time jobs. They're able to work very different hours than they would during the school year, which is excellent. There's some essential employees in our school community who are able to work a shift at Shaw's or work at Hilliards during normal school time because they don't have class and they're balancing their schedules like college students. So if there are events being scheduled off schedule, off of their normal class schedule, it would be really helpful to get that information early. So students are able to take time off from their jobs or do their, the way they need to, to participate.
Right. Uh, no, what I'm saying is this is during their normal schedule. Monday through Friday, the, uh, May twenty fifth to May twenty ninth. It's being considered their last five days of school because they're not taking final exams.
I, and, uh, can I just ask if, if there is a specific schedule that things might be happening? Is that what you're, what you're asking, uh, Becky Fleming?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. That if.
That, that gets communicated to the kids. We'll, we will definitely let the, let the staff know that. I don't know if it'll be necessarily scheduled.
Yeah, it's. So that, we're allowing the students in the, in the school to do that so that it's special for the kids. So as soon as they have whatever they have scheduled, like I, I seriously don't know what it is. So that's why I'm saying it's not a secret. I don't know what it is. Uh, they're scheduling it and, um, really the, okay, if I'm going to be completely frank and maybe get, go to superintendent prison, uh, I have allowed them to use the last five days of school for fun activities for students and I'm counting them as school days. Commissioner may not feel the same way about that, which is why I was a little more cryptic about it. However, to make sure I'm clear and to make sure that nobody thinks we have, um, secret things going on, I'm allowing them to use the last five days as fun, senior, cultural, um, collaborative, memorable experiences. So it's their scheduled five days. As long as they show up to their last five days of school, they'll be fine. They don't have to participate, but they're going to miss their opportunities. If the school has already scheduled what they're going to do, they would have already sent the schedule out. So if they haven't decided what they're going to do in those five days, um, then that's why you haven't gotten a schedule. So we, we can't provide one yet, but certainly the school will do that. That is not something that we do from central office. The, the high school will send that to you. And I'm confident as soon as they have it planned, it will go out to every senior.
Well, and I appreciate that. I, I will say that as a parent, I believe that the learning time for the high school is pretty limited and I have a senior, I have a sophomore as well. So, um, they've been able to work at, as essential workers at Shaw's. And I just want to make sure that they're able to give their boss adequate notice that they can't work because their schedule is set, but they're only in class a couple hours a day. So.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm glad it's been flexible for you. Uh, I'm sorry?
I can follow up with Mr. Paul directly, but I will go on record on this call as saying that the communication has been subpar, especially for our seniors.
Okay, well, the events haven't been planned yet. So as soon as they do that, I'm sure they'll send you that information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, next is the budget up. Are there any more questions, Chrissy?
Um, just one person had, and it was Kenny Flanagan, um, said, not a question, but at the appropriate time, could someone mention the food drive to benefit the Easton Food Pantry Monday, May fourth, from nine to eleven AM at the front of the Richardson Olmsted School?
Uh, but that's every Monday.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure. Yeah, every Monday, uh, at the front. So we have grab and go Monday, Wednesday and Friday behind Richardson Olmsted School from nine to eleven. But every Monday in the front of Richardson Olmsted School from nine to eleven, there's a contact, contactless food drive. So they drop off food, uh, or just pop open your trunk and volunteers will come and take it out of the car and it gets delivered to the Easton Food Pantry every Monday. We've had, uh, five, six SUV loads of groceries going there. So it's been extremely successful. So if anybody would like to do that, you don't have to sign up or call anybody. Just show up between nine and eleven and pull around the circle of Richardson Olmsted. You can leave it right on the curb or like I said, pop your trunk open. Thank you, Kenny.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, next is the budget update, Dr. Cabral.
Did you, did you want me to provide the remote learning update first?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Okay, so, um, as you know, last week, the governor officially closed all schools in the Commonwealth for the remainder of the school year. And on Friday evening, Commissioner Riley came out with what he's calling phase three of the remote learning experience, which provides guidance for districts moving forward. Um, this guidance also highlights specific content that the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has determined to be critical content for students to move from one grade to the next. This content is what we are referring to as power standards. The, the commissioner named it power standards and that's what we will be calling them moving forward. Um, we met with our administrators and curriculum leaders early this week to review the document and decide on how we will be moving forward. We're pleased to see that most of the recommendations that the commissioner outlined are already in place here in Easton. Um, the four goals that the commissioner outlined are to prioritize meaningful connections with educators and peers, to provide engaging core instruction focused on the content standards most critical for student success in the next grade, um, to offer opportunities for enrichment, exercise and play, and to ensure programming is, programming is accessible and communication is streamlined for students and families. When we look at the goals that the commissioner outlined, I wanted to specifically address number two, which is to provide engaging core instruction focused on the content standards most critical for student success in the next grade. Thankfully, all of our remote learning has always been driven by our content standards. The plans up until, up until this point have been focusing on standards that were covered through, already throughout the year. Now we have guidance through the publishing of the power standards on specific standards to focus on. This past week and tomorrow, our educators have been reviewing the power standards and placing them into three categories. Standards that have been covered to satisfaction, standards that have been covered but need review, whether whole group, small group or individually, and standards that have not been covered at all. Upon review, our teams have seen that most of the power standards have been covered. However, there are a few at each grade level that are considered new. Starting the week of May eleventh, teachers will be addressing some of the new standards. This will be new content, new teaching, and families should be on the lookout for this. May eleventh will be the earliest date that families can begin seeing new content. Some teachers may still be working through standards already covered as they may have determined those standards need further review. So if on May eleventh, new content isn't being covered, please don't be alarmed by this. And I just wanted to say, what will the new teaching look like of these new standards? That is what we're driving, that is what will be driving the remote learning going forward. Some may see asynchronous teaching, which will be videos from platforms that students are used to seeing. It also might be pre-recorded videos from staff members. This is all being decided by our highly trained teachers. I know that there are many parents out there that have been looking for live teaching. And I just want to say that this is a very, very difficult thing to put in place for our district. I know, for example, myself, if my stu, if my child in sixth grade was to participate in live teaching, it would be very challenging for us as a household to be participating in that. We have parents that are working from home. Multiple online meetings could jam a server. We have, um, not enough devices in households as a parent might be using a device at a particular time for a particular meeting that might be scheduled if there was live teaching going on. And there's also uncontrollable distractions within the house. So I know that it's, it might sound disappointing, but we have taken all of that into consideration and we're trying to serve all students to the best of our ability. Um, the next few days, I will be sending out more information with more specific information regarding the, um, the learning going forward. Um, the, as starting next week, all the remote learning will be on the power standards, but May eleventh will be the start of any new, new particular content. And that's what I have for you on that. Any questions? Just a reminder, if anyone has any questions, to please email, um, cpruitt@easton.k12.ma.us throughout this meeting.
Lady, do you have any questions, Caroline?
Uh, Chrissy, that was really a, a wonderful summary of, of what's going on and, um, I think very comprehensive and certainly based on what I've read about, you know, from, um, Commissioner Riley's information that he sent to everyone. I think that was a, a great way to kind of cover all the highlights. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Michelle?
No, I do not, but thank you for that update. I am glad to hear that new learning will be happening soon because that is some feedback that I've gotten. It's a, it's a lot of review and not as engaging.
And just to be clear, that was at the guidance of the state. We were not allowed to do that up to this point.
Right, absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have no comments. Thank you, Chrissy. Um, Jackie?
Yeah, um, so are these power standards, are they going to be, or the new, the new material, is that going to be in all content areas? Is it going to be focused by grade level and certain content areas? How is that going to work? That's a great question and I'm sorry I didn't address that. Um, the, the power standards that the commissioner and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has, um, come out with is based on the four core content areas. ELA, which is English as well, thinking of the high school. Um, and then it's not called ELA there anymore. Um, math, social studies and science. What we have done as a district, and this is why, you know, one of the many reasons why our curriculum leaders are so crucial here in Easton, is that we, some of our curriculum leaders are not within those four content areas. They're working within their departments to determine what the D E S I had determined for those four content areas. So they are working and, and determining which, um, standards are needed to move to the next level, uh, the next course or even, or the next grade. So for example, foreign language, um, our business, um, our family consumer science, uh, industrial arts, those content areas, they're, they're determining which, um, standards need to be completed and covered in art, physical education, all of that, um, and music to, in order to move to the next course. And those will be addressed.
And it is every grade level, Jackie.
Yes. So this, this, you may not have the answer to this yet, but I know at least in the younger grades, the, um, the science component had become all hands on learning. I would imagine it's kind of a challenge to figure out how to do this at home to move them forward. Has, has that process begun on how we're going to handle science for the younger grades? Yeah, that's, that's what the curriculum leaders are leading their content groups in deciding. Um, we know that, uh, in three through five this year, we just began the program, using the program Know Atom, which is a very hands-on, highly engaging, uh, program, also very focused on the Massachusetts standards, um, and the units that we've been writing and Keta two that will begin next year. Um, and so they are very mindful of duplicating um, the, the ideas behind the Know Atom with understanding that the limitations that may occur because they're, they're at home and not in the classroom. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Jen?
Uh, yeah, my only question is, um, just how are the teachers feeling about this? I, I can imagine it's a mixed bag of, you know, excitement to be moving on to the new stuff, but probably, you know, I, I, I know if I were in their shoes, I'd probably be feeling pretty stressed about how to figure out how to execute. So can you?
You know, honestly, uh, a lot of, so if you think of the end of the school year, April, May and June, a lot of it is MCAS. Uh, the schools are really upended during MCAS, even if a grade is not taking MCAS. It's a lot of field days, uh, end of school events, field trips and things like that. So of course learning is going on, but it's not like October, November, December, for example. So many, and because it is the end of the school year, many of those standards were covered and covered very well. So they felt very validated by that part of it, excuse me, but it gives them more direction and an opportunity and you know, there were many who wanted to move on and again, we had to go along with the guidelines of the state. And so to this point, they, they really weren't able to. So uh, I have, I mean, I, I jump into less meetings than Chrissy does. Unfortunately, I wish I could be in more of them, but um, uh, from what I've seen, they've been handling it very well. I'm not saying that there isn't anxiety or stress because what they're doing is Herculean. They're really, they're, they're redefining their entire role within weeks. So we're just so thankful for everything they've done and we're very, very happy and satisfied with what they've done to this point. Uh, however, even with this curve ball, I, I think it's just been kind of more of the, of the same unless Chrissy has seen something different.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that our teachers are like, they're, they're, they're like rock stars. I mean, they just keep going and they are really, I mean, talk about, you know, you didn't learn this in your. And they are really, I mean, talk about, you know, you didn't learn this in your methods class, you know, how to teach this way. And they are redefining.
The powers are pitching in, people are cheering. All of the service providers.
Yeah, our, our educators are working so collaboratively to plan. Um, when I'm able to jump into meetings, the conversations, it's almost like I'm interrupting because they are so engaged. And they're being so thoughtful about what to do and how to provide um, engaging activities. If kids aren't engaged, and I just want to say this because I think that this is really important. Because you know, I, I'm homeschooling my, my son right now too. And if kids aren't engaged, I think it's really important as parents for us to. Try and have them look at something in a deeper level because that is what our teachers are doing in the classroom. So um, you know, there, our teachers are working so hard. And you know, it's, it's very easy for us as, as um, parents at home to say. You know, to be critical of some of the work that, that teachers might be doing. But teachers, I, I, I literally, I can't. I, I can't, you know, I was a first grade teacher for many, many years and I just think about what I would have been doing. I would have been worried sick planning every single activity, trying to make sure that every child is being reached. And we are still, cause we, we recognize that the engagement, you know, falls off sometimes. And so our teachers are, are providing, and when I say teachers, I mean paraprofessionals and, and all of the educators within the. Yeah, within the system. Um, they're providing, you know, um, meetings with kids, whether it's whole group, small group. They're um, multiple times a week. They are emailing parents. They're, some of our, some of our educators are actually teaching parents how to use strategies with their kids. You know, so the role of educator has, is changed right now. And it's not just educating the child, but it's also they're educating parents too. And um, you know.
And don't forget they're doing a lot of social emotional intervention too.
Yes.
And not just with kids, but with parents. And that's another, because you can't access any of the education unless you're working with the students on that as well. And if, you know, if a parent is not seeing that, then that's great. That's a great thing. Uh, because maybe your family's not experiencing that. But it's hard to know what all of other students uh, might be experiencing that the staff is helping them with at this time. So um, we are, like I said, we're, we're very satisfied with what's happening. We're happy that it's moving forward. I think they're happy that it's moving forward and um. Yeah, there's just, it, it, it's, it's very complex and without, you know, giving away um. Maybe personal, information that could be personalized, which of course we don't want to do. I don't want to give any examples or anything. But I can assure you, there's a lot going on behind the scenes, a lot.
And, and also to remember that they're at home, they're at home too with their kids, with their three kids that are doing remote learning. That, you know, with their toddlers and their, you know, infants or whatever, like they're, they're at home.
Their sick relatives or we have many staff members who are ill themselves. Uh, but you know, the commissioner keeps repeating and I want to make sure I can, I, I repeat it too. There's a reason that we don't do school online. Because the things that we do in a classroom, you can't do online. Where this is not a replication of the school day. It's not intended to be a replication of the school day. Uh, it would be very unwise to think that that's even possible. Just as a teacher, we know that a lot of the classroom management that we do, a lot of the assignments and work we do is based on immediate feedback. You see what a student's doing, you're able to redirect, you give a verbal, a visual cue. You, you know, you use proximity to help somebody stay redirected. You lose all of that with online learning. So we're, we're just, it's not a lack of our teachers, believe me. It's, and, and I'm in constant contact with superintendents across the state, so I know exactly what every district's doing. And we, as I said in our last meeting, we have been modeled by several, several districts already. They're using our information, they're copying it, who cares? We're happy about that. Um, we're happy to see that it's working for them too. So there's a difference between, uh, and I know nobody's comparing and something we talked about last time. But there's a difference between, you know, looking at what's happening in a couple of different districts and then finding out what is actually successful. So it may look different in different places, but uh, what's happening here is successful. So we're gonna keep going with that.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you so much for all that feedback. I was really curious to kind of see how the, how the education staff are handling everything. So, thank you.
It was a thoughtful question. I'm sure they would appreciate that you, you're concerned about that.
Chrissy, Chrissy, you had something else there or?
Nope.
Okay, are there any questions coming into you?
No, that's what I keep checking. If I keep holding this up, it says love, just to remind everyone to love, no.
If you were showing us or something, okay.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just checking. I do have some questions, sorry.
Go ahead.
It just came through. Um, this is not a question for school committee. Oh, okay, forget it.
Okay. All right. Um, any, any other comments or anything? Okay, so we're gonna move on to the budget update, Dr. Cabral.
I'm sorry, there's one more.
Go ahead.
They keep coming in, I'm sorry. Um, it says also clarify prom, did she say potentially this August? This is from Diane Hedges. Other towns have included awards night with graduation. Is that an option? So it would be live?
So uh, so again, I'm being informed of what the school is deciding and I literally had this meeting yesterday. So if people, if I'm saying something, in fact, I, maybe I shouldn't even be saying anything. Cause I'm taking the thunder away from the school for announcing it. But literally yesterday, we decided on the graduation together. And um, and then they asked if they could be allowed to try to reschedule any senior events that week as well. And I said yes. So they're trying to do that right now. So I'm sure between yesterday, late afternoon and today, they have not been able to do that yet. But they will let people know if they are able to. As far as awards night, they have already decided that that is going to be videoed. Because um, as I, actually I had said this to the students yesterday. I can understand why the school would want to do that. There's so much planning for awards night. Between the donors and the speeches and the kids. And it, it, it actually is a great deal. It doesn't seem like it because they do such a good job organizing it. That it, it, it goes so smoothly, but there is a great deal of preparation into that. And so they are going to pre-record that and I told them I, I supported that decision. So uh, awards night, monogram night and tempo, they're recording and class night, they already did. Or they're doing. So those are going to be virtual. What they're talking about is graduation. Either being in person or, or televised August first. And then they simply asked me permission to try to reschedule the prom at a later date. And their senior crews. So please do not be frustrated if you don't have dates yet. That's because I probably shouldn't have even said anything. I'm sure they don't have the dates yet because they would tell you. Uh, certainly they would tell you if they had that information. Literally, they asked for permission yesterday. So I'm highly doubtful they've had time to schedule anything. So I don't know the dates. Um, because they probably don't have them yet. So I'm sorry, I can't answer that question. I'm really sorry I can't answer that question. But as soon as they have them, I'm confident they'll let people know because they want kids to participate. Believe me, nobody's more motivated for this stuff to happen than the seniors. And that's who's working on it, the senior class officers. So I'm confident they're gonna try to get this done as soon as possible. And then they're gonna want all their friends to know about it. So I'm confident they're gonna let their friends know about it. So they're the ones that are doing this right now with their class advisors who are fabulous. So uh, you, believe me, you probably will all know before I know, to be honest with you.
We have two more questions.
Hey Chrissy.
Um, Lucy Waters asks, would you consider combining awards night with graduation?
Uh, I, I think I just answered that one.
Better ask, okay.
But if, if she didn't hear that, just have her ask me to repeat it and I can.
Okay. Um, and Jackie Gottwald asked, what about safe grad night?
That I don't know. They did not talk to me about safe grad night. So I would contact Mr. Paul about that.
Okay, thank you.
Or I don't, I don't remember them asking. We didn't discuss safe grad night.
Okay, anything else? All right. Okay. Good, okay. Uh, budget update, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, well. So unfortunately for, for, or fortunately, I'm not sure. Uh, what I would recommend, put it this way, I don't have the full F Y twenty-one presentation that I gave in February. Because I gave that presentation already. So I'm sorry, I have to plug in my unit. So it may be, maybe off kilter a little bit now. Um, so. I would encourage people, if, if you have not seen that presentation yet, again, it was sent out or it was. Tell, it was presented and televised in February. So it's, it's available on E C A. But I did give the entire budget presentation. It's certainly going to change on its head now. We're starting all over again. I just think that that presentation is important for context. What I mean is, in that presentation, and this is again where I'll direct my conversation back to the school committee and not the audience. In the presentation, you'll remember that we talked about just the cost of rolling over level services. Was going to be a three point four percent increase. From F Y twenty. And there were some significant needs identified by the staff. They participated in a phenomenal, a phenomenal exercise of. Going through the entire school for uh, needs-based. Uh, assessments and they came up with lists from. Each department and from each grade level of what was absolutely most eminent needs. Like to the point of being concerning to them. And if you remember, we had gone backwards with the F Y twenty budget. We actually had gotten uh, regressive. And even in the one year, I just want to remind you of some of the things that happened as a result of that. We had student outplacements, special education outplacements for students that we were not able to service. Because we didn't have the appropriate uh, programs in place because we couldn't afford to staff them. We had staff injuries. We had oversized classes and labs to the point that uh, the science department at Oliver Ames. Was asking to have a science teacher brought back that we eliminated the position last year because we couldn't afford it in the budget. And they just have gotten to a point where the labs aren't safe. They have not been able to cover the curriculum. Because if you've got thirty kids or even twenty-five kids in a lab that's supposed to have twenty or fifteen. Every student has to perform a lab to, in order to, in order to demonstrate their competency. So now you're having every student or every lab being conducted twice. It just, i- it, it bogs it down to the point that you can't get through the entire curriculum. Several of the science electives can't be offered. And they said that if we aren't able to add a person next year to the science department, that many electives wouldn't be offered. We also had several emergency responses and student hospitalizations for social emotional learning. Which of course I can't say is a direct correlation to lack of staff. Or I can't prove based on data, but anecdotally, I would absolutely professionally say that that's true. Because what we're providing now are reactive therapeutic services to students. What I mean by that is when somebody uh, shows that they are spiraling or having a crisis. Then we interject and provide therapeutic services. There's a lot we can do proactively, but we do not have the staff in order to provide proactive services. And so we've seen that as a problem this, this year. We had, we didn't have substitutes for many, many, many areas. That is not best practice. We did not have coverage for teachers when they were absent, for teachers to attend professional development. That was very important uh, for their uh, professional capacity, uh, being able to attend meetings. Um, we had again, more findings and corrective action from the Department of Education and the Office of Civil Rights. We have, and, and as you, you can imagine, and I don't think I need to tell you, all that does is create a decrease in professional morale and self-efficacy. And that's difficult to maintain when people are doing double, triple, quadruple duty with minimal resources. In terms of the long-term impact, these are things we only saw in one school year. In terms of the long-term impact, financially, socially, emotionally for students, achievement scores. I can't possibly predict what that's going to be, but I can tell you it's going to take a hit. There's no way that it, it can't. We know what the students need, we know what we need to provide and we simply haven't been able to do that for them. So that was us coming into the F Y twenty-one budget season. What I did was I showed data in this presentation of the things basically that I just talked about. So I talked about special education outplacements, I gave that data, I gave data about student challenges, about the mental health. And um, hospitalizations that we've had throughout the course of the year of students. Our adjustment counselors, um, the caseloads that they have as opposed to best practice recommendations. I also talked about the laws of educating students who are English language learners and explained that we were. Uh, needed, based on the needs, because they need to be individually assessed and they are. Based on their needs and the service hours that they're uh, recommended to be provided by the state. They, the sixty-six students in the E L program required twenty-seven thousand hours of services. We have three staff members in the E L department. And all together, working full day every day for a hundred and eighty uh, school days. They are able to provide twenty-seven hundred hours of service. So that's twenty-seven hundred when twenty-seven thousand are required. So we're clearly not in compliance with that recommendation. And then I discussed the, this ongoing problem about not offering free day kindergarten. And how not only are students in full day outperforming students in half day, uh, all the way up to third grade. Um, tracking their achievement scores, but it is something that is going to be required. There is current legislation being considered for kindergarten to be. Uh, offered full day from every district in the Commonwealth. I showed you the maps of districts that now do that. I um, showed you that we are among the highest charging uh, tuition in the state. And we are one of only thirty-eight districts out of um. Three hundred and fifty-one communities in the, that still charge tuition. And so clearly at some point, the state is gonna make this a requirement. If we were to do this in one year, it would be a seven or eight hundred thousand dollar expenditure and it would completely decimate our budget. So we did at that time recommend the science teacher, an E L professional. One, which certainly wouldn't solve the problem. Um, we recommended mental health staff. We recommended that we start incorporating free kindergarten in. In other words, move a, a couple of teachers a year, a few teachers a year from the kindergarten tuition line to the operational line. Of the operational budget. And we talked about fully staffing this, sa- fully and safely staffing the special education programs. Well, what that did to our presentation, what that did to uh, what we were. Oh, I'm sorry. I also discussed certain revenue losses we were gonna have this year. Title one, uh, we were losing some tuitions of students that had been tuitioned in previously. Our charter school assessment has not let up. Um, are out of district. There are just many things that are compromising our ability to um, really make ends meet. So when we uh, met with the town in February. We showed that we really needed uh, about a four percent increase from F Y twenty. To have those additions. It, it is not going to, it wasn't going to put us where we needed to be. I'll just use English language learners as an example. If we add one English language teacher, you're adding nine hundred hours of service. We still need twenty-six thousand eight hundred more. So it certainly wasn't doing anything to eradicate issues. But it, it was at least a step in the direction so we can somehow turn this huge ship around. Well, that came out, um, it actually came out to exactly four point three three percent of an increase. And then we. Came back to the town and they asked us to pare that down even further. And when we did, we realized that we were probably only going to be able to. Um, work with a level service budget for next year. So all of those really essential needs, the mental health. Really essential needs, the mental health, the EL, the um special education programming. Working towards but uh kindergarten, all of those were taken off the table. This was all pre-COVID. Okay, so I'm just really trying to get people back to speed. And again, all of the details are in that presentation, which are online, and people can view that at any time. Now COVID comes along. Well, this has clearly has had huge implications on the. Revenue of not only the town, but obviously the state and frankly, the world. We have gone from. Being hopeful to get a three percent or three uh a just over three percent increase. To actually having to take a five percent cut from FY twenty. So instead of an uh a three percent increase from FY twenty, we're looking at um a potential five percent. Cut to FY twenty. So I met with the town administrator this week. And the our director of finance, Marilyn Gordon, and we. They went over what are the most recent town figures. Because of course they, as I, as I explained last time, I'll do it again in case we have any different audience members. The town has no idea what to expect. There, the revenue shortfalls is is really the problem. So let me maybe explain that again real quickly. I I'll go from the school side up. So from the school side, a lot of people are saying, holy cow, you must be saving tons of money because people aren't in school. So now what are you gonna do with all this money? Unfortunately, that isn't the case. Our expenses are outpacing any savings that we have. Why is that the case? Isn't everything already in a line item? Well, school finance is extremely complicated. And the way it works, our number one goal has been to keep all employees on the payroll. That's our number one goal. And many of our employees, not every employee is in the operating budget. There are revenue streams that we get as a district that we use. To pay for many employees, over a hundred employees in our district are paid not through the operating budget, but from other means. Whether it's a state grant or a federal grant, I I said previously that half of all kindergarten teachers' salaries are paid for. With kindergarten tuitions. Uh, the same is true of pre-K. We have um activities fees that come in. And uh sports fees that come in that help pay for our sports and our activities. We have a pay and ride that helps pay for transportation. You know what I've said about the transportation transportation contract? We're trying to figure out what to pay on that. Those we, it doesn't behoove us for businesses to go under at this time. We have not been paying on that since March thirteenth. That is something that the legislature is actually working on a draft. Of whether we're gonna be required or able to pay transportation vendors. That's a tremendous amount of money, so we'll be finding out about that very soon. Uh, we're paying food service workers right now out of the operational budget that you, that typically doesn't come out of that. That comes out of those the meals that kids buy. We're not charging for meals right now because we're obviously feeding. Um, children that that are um in food sensitive homes. Um, we have to replace a ton of materials. Marilyn Gordon was on a call with FEMA today. And bad news upon bad news, it seems like anything we kind of thought was hopefully gonna be covered by FEMA is not gonna be covered by FEMA. So the food that we have given out is not being covered by FEMA. The staff that's working is not gonna be covered by FEMA. So now we're having to pay for all of this out of the operating budget. So eighty percent of our budget. Is staff. That is true. So that leaves twenty percent for things, materials. Literally things like paper, paper clips, cleaning products and so forth. So it's not a huge amount. Well, as you can imagine, by March, we had already spent most of that money on materials. We only had a couple months of school left. So. Now we're working with a small percent of our smallest percent, and we're paying staff with that. So I hopefully that in a very quick version can help people understand why any savings that we have, which really. Other than some heat and and utilities has not been a lot. We thought we were gonna save a lot of money in substitutes. But uh we had over eighty substitutes apply for unemployment. And we did not realize that the substitutes would be accepted for unemployment, and they were. And because we're a municipality, we are self-employed, and so we pay the uh unemployment. So. We are not in a position where we can say we have a ton of money left over. We're just trying to get to the end of the school year. In addition, because we're looking at a potential five percent cut next year, we're trying to. Prepay as many things as we can. What does that mean? It means if we can buy paper for next year, can we do that now? Because we may not be able to afford it next year. So. Now I'll get to the state level um in in the town. Education is paid for by um local revenue, which comes from taxes. People haven't been buying cars, so there's no excise tax going to the town. People have not been frequenting restaurants, so there aren't meals, taxes. Or certainly not to the level that they were, took a huge cut. Chapter seventy money, which is the money that we get from the state for education, comes from the lottery. Uh, people are not buying lottery tickets right now. I think lottery has gone down projected eighty percent. As opposed to this time last year. That's all money. It seems like things are not connected. And why on earth would lottery have anything to do with Easton Public Schools? Well, it 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 pays for children's education. In addition to the town contribution. So. Overall, people are clearly very wary about what this means for our budget. If you remember when we left school in March, the governor had put out a preliminary budget. And that's what we were basing our budget on. Well, that budget every year, it's a huge, long process. And it goes to the senate and the house, the Ways and Means Committee, and back to the governor again. And it can change at every one of those places. Oftentimes, the final budget for the state hasn't even been completed before we go to town meeting and vote on a budget. We we're used to not really being sure what's happening every year. This is completely different. There are projections out there from economists that go anywhere from. Three percent to fifteen percent cuts. There are unemployment rates that are hopping all over the place. Um, people are are projecting, very smart people are projecting that this is going to be worse than the two thousand eight recession. For the town of Easton, by. Whatever um whatever universal oversight the town of Easton had, they uh you all. Approved an operational override right before the Great Recession in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And that's literally what got the district and the town through the recession. So this town really didn't feel that. Uh recession as much as many other towns did, uh towns that I was working in, for example, and cities that I was working in. Um, we, if we're going to be put in a position where it's worse than the two thousand eight recession. Without the benefit of an operational override and with a problematic stabilization fund. Which we have had in Easton for the last several years. Uh, despite the best efforts, believe me, the last few years, the the select board and and town planners have done a phenomenal job turning. Things around. But. If you remember, again, right before we left, the Budget Subcommittee did an exhaustive and very, very thorough. Investigation of all of the expenses and revenues of the town and concluded. That the situation in Easton was not a, an expense issue. It was a revenue issue. And again, the town's been working very, very diligently to fix that problem through things like the sewer project and so forth. Um, and had said that really the the only other alternative left to taxpayers at this time. Was an operational override. And then, of course, the unexpected happened and COVID uh came along. So the bottom line is that. The town is is using a moving target. Um, we've met with the state and legislators as early uh as recent as this week. And they have said that they have no idea what we can expect. None, zero. They have not even determined the process they're gonna use. Are they all gonna work together and come up with one budget now? They're just agreeing about whether because the governor's budget came out before COVID, and it's clearly not viable now. Does it go back to the governor to present another one? And then they start the process. And others are saying, you know, the governor already get gave a budget, so now it goes to the house and senate and adapt it as you need to. They can't, they have not yet figured that out. I'm I'm sure they're working on it very hard, but there aren't any answers yet. And when we don't have the answers for this, uh we are not, we're not. We're not chasing a moving target target, we're chasing a speeding bullet, and we don't know which way it's gonna go. And so unfortunately, um or fortunately, we have some very smart people at the town offices. Who have done their projections the best they possibly can with the very limited information they have. And unfortunately, it leaves us with at least a one point nine million dollar deficit. Um, in the town. And that is with the schools getting three point four percent, which is a level budget. So we need to come up collectively as a town with one point eight million dollars. I can tell you that. From a school's perspective, um I mean, I would imagine we can expect to be a a good chunk of that money. We have been paring down for the last four or five years. So if you'll remember, we outsourced food service, we outsourced drivers. We cut back on administration, we cut back on hours for people, we cut back on services. We increased our fees. We increased fees again. Uh, we considered other ways of generating revenue, like bus fees and transportation. We. Have really exhausted every possible option that we had. So to say, you know, go and trim the fat now, if anybody hasn't been following along with our budgets for the last few years. And is not certain about what has been cut, they can easily go back and take a look at my last, at least my last three. Superintendent presentations and can very clearly see it's outlined on every single presentation, what we have cut each year. Um, we have tried, of course, to tr- to make that. The least painful for people as possible. So in in one sense, it's fantastic if people don't realize how much we've been cutting. Because we've been trying to preserve our students from feeling that. And preserving our staff from feeling that as well. The downside of that is that some people may feel like we haven't been doing anything at all, and that's just not the case. So of course, we have some people that are well aware, because it affected them personally, about things that have been cut in the past few years. You put them all together, it's an awful lot. Uh, so I I guess I would say we're in the middle of the perfect storm right now in Easton. We have not had an operational override. Since the one I discussed back two thousand eight-ish. Uh, we have been trying to build up the stabilization fund in town, so we have not had the benefit of that. We have been losing ground on federal and state grants, which is why I keep encouraging people, please, take ten minutes and complete your census. And make sure everybody you know and are related to does that as well. Again, something that doesn't seem related, but very much is related to school funding. And now we have the situation with COVID. So. With looking at potentially having to cut. A million or or million or so dollars potentially, I am asking now. For the direction of the school committee in doing something like this. What I mean by that is, there are going to be, there it's gonna necessitate some extreme changes. So whether that's programmatic changes. Uh, it it's going to involve layoffs, whether that is draconian layoffs. Or whether we try to minimize layoffs as much as possible, whether we try to renegotiate with unions. It's going to involve things that we have not yet done. And so I, in order to make some recommendations or to even collect the data on how much. We could save in certain areas or any revenue maybe that we could generate. I really need to know the priorities of the school committee. What is it you want us above all else to preserve? And areas that you think uh are necessary for us to look at in terms of cutting. Or charging more, or what have you, or eliminating first. Um, and so. With that, that is the sad conclusion of my budget presentation. Um, but um. Before we move forward in the budget process, I'm gonna um, I'm gonna ask you to have that conversation and provide us with some guidance, please.
Okay, thank you. Caroline, did you wanna make a comment?
Well, first of all, obviously, this is, you know, not unexpected, but still devastating information. You know, I I think it might make sense if if the time is available to us. To come up with lists at our May eighth meeting. I mean, I'm not really prepared kind of on the spot to come up with recommendations. I mean, certainly, I would hope we could do whatever we can to keep as many staff as we possibly can. I also recognize that the longer we delay um addressing the. Issues with special education, that that could end up costing us even more money. And of course, laying off staff costs us money too, because we're um self-insured for unemployment. So, you know, obviously, those two things pop out, but I think that this is gonna take some time to to sort of think about. And and maybe discuss in a more thorough fashion on May eighth, unless this is, uh, you know, you need. Your the feedback like tonight, in which case, you know, we'll just move forward with that.
Well, I. I appreciate the the um the thoughtful consideration, and certainly May eighth will be great, but if there are any initial. Uh, areas that you would like me and Marilyn to explore, so that we can bring information to you on May eighth. You're not, I'm not necessarily saying, um, you know, tell us what, cut this or cut that. But to say, well, how much does this cost? How much does this cost? How much would it be if if this happened? So that we can bring you those real hard figures, and then perhaps um you can make decisions from that. The other thing to keep in mind, which makes us different than any other uh department. But is very common across the Commonwealth and school systems, is that we have a June fifteenth deadline of letting people know. I mean, ethically, of course, we want people to know as soon as possible if they're gonna be laid off. Uh, but by contract, we have to let them know by June fifteenth. And so. Um, whenever we have a process of layoffs, it's never simple, it's always horrible. But in terms procedurally, it's very complicated, because you do it based on need. So you don't go to your, you know, like a, like a store perhaps, or some other organization might go to the least five senior people. In the organization and say, you know, here we are. Uh, you, we've completed a needs assessment, we know. Uh, what our students have chosen for high school classes, we know our enrollment for our classes, um elementary and so forth. And so uh what we need to do is say, okay, if we were going to pare down in this particular area. We let a person know, they could be a, they could be a twenty-five-year employee, depending on what department they're in. Then there's a series of bumping and changing roles, and so we, we need literally weeks for that. Before June fifteenth. Um, so. Not that this is a process I wanna rush, but uh we we do need to get going as soon as possible. And if there's any information that we can have ready for you for the eighth, that would be really helpful in getting us there.
Nancy, I I do have another sort of combination of questions and comments. We're sort of flying blind here. Because we honestly don't know yet what the fall's gonna look like. And there have been a lot of, you know, very um scholarly. Articles from educational research entities. That are suggesting that things might look quite different, that there might even have to be, you know, kind of rotating schedules and things like that. And um, of course, one of the obstacles to a really flexible scheduling. And um, of course, one of the obstacles to a really flexible scheduling system would be the transportation issue. Because if you're bringing kids to school, you know, different kids, different days, or even. You know, half of kids, half of the day, half of the kids, the other half day, these are the kinds of things that are being kind of um discussed. And as I said, educational circles. But, you know, the expenses associated with those things can be um unexpectedly high. So it's, so we really are flying blind. And the other thing is the, you know, that. The June fifteenth date is, of course, it's a requirement, but what happens if you get to? You know, if you say we wanna preserve as many staff as possible, which I think absolutely should be a huge priority. Um, but what happens if we get to September or October and there are expenses that we hadn't anticipated associated with this? Incredible, you know. Uh, pandemic that we're facing. It, you could, you would still have to do layoffs, right? I mean, if you can't keep people employed for the rest of the year. Because some other unanticipated expense or loss of revenue came forward, how would you even handle that? So I'm I'm really, I I mean, I know that these things are in the contract, but those contracts certainly were not written with a pandemic in mind. So um, I'm just wondering, you know, those kinds of things, I think we we kind of have to put some thought into too. How do you balance making the right decision in June? That could be completely upended by October, you know, so it's it's um, it's really complex. And um.
Precisely. It it's like chasing a speeding bullet.
Yeah, and as I said, we're flying blind, but, okay, time for someone else to weigh in.
Michelle?
Like Caroline, I really don't feel like I could give specific recommendations or. It it, there's just so many places that would be affected by this or that. Um, we would possibly be looking at. Is it possible for for information to be sent to us? Um, just for consideration ourselves that you guys might be looking at or, because you see the bigger picture.
Well, I mean, you guys are all aware of every area of the budget and I don't know what you'd be willing to consider. So, do you want to eliminate sports? Do you wanna eliminate activities? Do you wanna lay off thirty teachers? Do you want to find out how much it costs to not offer buses for grade seven to twelve? Do you wanna double fees? Do you wanna, you know? And I'm not saying do you want to, obviously, you don't wanna do any of those things. Do you wanna know what any of those will cost? So that you can figure out how you can get to a million or so dollars. Um, I don't know what it is you want us to bring you the cost of, it's gonna, it's gonna require a lot of analytics and. And, you know, do you want us to talk to our units? I don't know what, I don't know what direction you're looking for us to go. As, you know, I don't know where the town of Easton wants us to go with this. I don't know what they're. I don't know what they want their education to look like right now, and I'm looking for that guidance from you.
Nancy, it's Caroline again. You're saying something, but you know, that we need to consider having to eliminate a million dollars, but. That's just for starters, right? I mean, theoretically, there could, as I said, there could be just unknown expenses. Associated with an ongoing pandemic. I don't think we really have the assurance that we're going to be out of this anytime soon. Not at all, right, so.
Example, I'm sorry to cut you off, but but just as an example. In the FEMA call, we realized that the all the food that we donated, um, all that all has to be replaced, it's not covered. Um, all of the supplies that we donated. Uh, we, in order to even start school again, we have to completely replenish all of our cleaning supplies in six schools. We have to restock food in six schools, we have to restock nurses' offices in six schools. Um, and then we have to disinfect everything over again, we have to. Just the expense of opening the door again is going to be exorbitant. And these figures are based on. Like I said, a five percent cut, as you said, that's if we're going back business as usual in September. Now, your guess is as good as mine is, which is good as anybody else in the world right now about whether we will be going back to school in October. Or how we will be going back to school in October, I I mean, in September, as you said. Uh, or. We're planning for an unplannable event and and so that's why. I I'm not really sure. What kind of a reality, what are the people of Easton? Looking to preserve as priorities? And what are they saying we can live without these things? Because it's now it's become a judgment call. Now it's not a professional opinion. My professional opinion, we can't go without anything else because we are at the bone right now. So I exhausted my professional advice on this. Uh, we we have gotten rid of anything we can possibly expend. From a professional and economic perspective for these children. So, right now, it's what are people willing to be without in order to open the doors? Because we are bound by law to provide a free and appropriate education for students. Sorry to make that sound harsh, but that's exactly what it is right now. Unless the federal government comes through with some stimulus money that is. Just gonna save the day and and certainly I can't predict something like that. The the CARES Act, for example, didn't save our day at all. Because of the constraints on what we can spend it on. So. Even if a stimulus comes through, i- it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to help us with the issues that we're having right now.
Nancy, I'm sorry, I don't mean to dominate the conversation here, but. Uh, I think Michelle alluded to this, maybe it would be helpful for us to have some sort of list of, you know. What would we save if we didn't do seven to twelve busing, which of course. Bless you, not required by law. You know. Normally, in a situation like this, I would be inclined to try to preserve even the. Co-curricular programs because they keep so many children engaged. But that would almost necessitate higher class sizes in the academic area. Because you've got to find those funds somewhere. So that's a, that's a kind of balancing act discussion that I think we have to have, you know, do we keep our sports programs, but then.
I think that's the meta-level conversation that I think we need is what what are the priorities and what are the things that? We need to investigate. Um, costs for you.
So, Nancy, do you mind if I say?
Yeah, I want you to jump in next, go ahead.
So. I mean, I think, obviously, we don't know, as you have said, where we're gonna be in the fall, so we can't. We have to plan with what we know now and just go forward and make whatever adjustments we need to make in the future. I think for now, we need to focus on what. Our school district is supposed to be focusing on, that's educating our students. And so I think in terms of that. My priority would be keeping as many educators as possible. Um, and focusing on those those core studies that our kids need to move on to different grades, to move on to college, to move on to. Their lives. Um, and I think that has to be the priority. I think looking at everything else, then we have to figure out. What we can potentially keep, what we may not be able to keep for now. But I think, at least for me, my priority is keeping our educators as as many of them as possible. Um, and focusing on our core mission, which is to educate our students.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, Jen?
Yeah, alright, so. Um, some of the things I'd like to see info on would be um. What would we save if? Class size went up by certain increments, say, average class size is just some kind of number, say, average class size. In elementary is, I don't know, twenty or twenty-two students now. What would we save if we went to twenty-five per grade, per class? What would we save if we went to, you know, thirty? Um, what would, what would that look like? Um, I, again, for athletics, and I I know Marilyn has done this before, where we've gotten, you know, if we increased by twenty-five dollars. It turns into X amount if we increase by, you know, every increment of twenty-five dollars in fees for. Sports or extra, other extracurriculars results in X amount in savings um out of the budget. So if we could have that um updated and to also include what would it be?
I'm sorry, increasing the fees, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, so on athletics, I think she had two breakouts uh on athletics. Or three, actually, I think it was athletics, music. And um, and the activity fee. Cause I think it's slightly different impacts um on those. And then for, I guess, the bigger extracurricular activities, what would it look like if we eliminated them? Or made them a hundred percent self-funded by participants? Um, transportation, I think if we can get, what would it, what would it mean if we did mandated transportation? And eliminated or charged for everything else in a way that doesn't increase. The district's costs, because I know that we absorb some of that um incremental costs. Uh, another thing I've heard from voters is is looking at if um if administration would take salary cuts. Temporarily. Or or even even staff. So that would obviously be discussions with units on whether or not that would be. You know, a a more feasible option than having to eliminate some positions. I think. I think those are, yeah, I I can't think of, like, what. Do we have any other levers to pull?
Well, if if one comes up, Jen, just jump in. I, I agree that, yep, you're welcome. I agree that we need to look at things and. And, you know, the things that Marilyn would give us at regular meetings, you know, how much this is, how much that is. Um, it's important to see it all laid out, you know. Pre-K to twelve because, just because we have athletics, you know, we also have the little ones too and. And it's just, there's so much going on. Uh, I think we did a budget. And I think we have to do a budget as if, we have to do a budget as if school is gonna be normal. And then if it's not gonna be normal because of covid, then we have to trust that our state. Or federal government, but I don't know that we can trust that, that place, but. Um, to to fund what we can't do and still give our kids the best education possible. So I know there's a lot out there, my, I guess my other thing is before the May eighth meeting. Is um, is there a way that we as a committee? And possibly, of course, with uh Leisha, Chrissy and Marilyn, can we just meet like? And and, you know, whether it's Zoom or whatever. But do we have to have, I mean, we're trying to put a budget together. Do we have to have a public, you know, does it have to be announced, does it have? Let's do our thing and then bring it to the public on May eighth. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it has to be public.
Yeah, can't do it.
I didn't know, I didn't know with this state of emergency if we could just sit and talk.
I'm sorry, Nancy, maybe we could have, you know, a workshop type of public meeting where we just discuss the budget. And we kind of hash all this out.
Right, well, that's what I'm.
Yeah, but it's still posted in. Still pu- it's still posted in public though, so it's, I think she was just trying to make it done faster and it it would.
But you don't have to allow like public input or or participation during that time that you're trying to have a solid discussion.
I think that would be hopeful.
So what day, I mean, I'll, we'll get to, I'll find out from you guys what day is the best. I'm just thinking if if we can just do what we're doing now, but not in the regular school committee meeting and just make a budget discussion. And put everything out on the table.
Great idea. I think that's a good idea, Nancy.
Alright, so I'll get a deal from everybody.
Okay.
But also maybe Leisha could be prepared with some of those cost estimates, like, you know, the transportation, the. And and even for something like like athletic fees, the fees don't pay for the whole program by any means. Um, so we kind of have to see what. You know, what proportion, even if we raise the fees, what proportion of the program it would actually fund. Same thing for some of the other co-curricular or extracurricular activities and, you know, even at the elementary level. I just wanted to make one comment about the class size thing. That was one of the first things I thought about. I mean, it seems as though we always. Even before covid, it seemed like the high school was always the the area or the, you know, the level that suffered in terms of class size. Because we were so invested in keeping class sizes low at the elementary level and there's, you know, really good research that supports that position. But, you know, with covid, having larger class sizes potentially creates greater risk. So it's, it's just so complicated, you know? I mean, I I don't know if there would, I don't know what the. Kind of the actual greater risk would be in a class of twenty-seven instead of twenty-two. But I'm assuming it would still be, the closer people are together, the more the risk. And of course, our top priority has to be the health and safety of our children and our staff and their families. So it's just um so complex. Because, you know, the virus is going to be around for at least another year and a half, even if we get a vaccine. It's gonna be over another year before you can widely disseminate that, so. Lot of complicated questions.
Right, um, and I have some more, two more things for me. Uh, first of all, Caroline, on your point. If if we are in a covid society, the school department, do we have to buy masks for everybody? Does everybody have to wear masks every day, da-da-da? There are a thousand questions. My other thing is, Leisha, do you know how many non-PTS teachers there are in Easton?
Hmm, not that many.
Because that's, that's the June fifteenth date, I believe. I think if you're, if you're going to.
No, we have to let anybody know by the the last day of school, June fifteen.
So, uh, uh, a teacher that's professional status, they also, that's June fifteenth? It's not in May? Okay, alright, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
I had two other um. I guess a question, two questions. So um, another thing I'd be interested in analyzing is. What's the minimum number of electives that need to be offered at the high school in order for students to fulfill their credit requirements? And that might help inform whether or not we can reduce the number of electives offered and save some staffing there.
Well, the, that, that is a class size issue, you know, right? Okay, fine, because that, because if you don't have the elective, the kids need to go somewhere else.
Right, yeah, okay, exactly. So figuring out, say, you, you know, say we pick a a max size of, you know, twenty-five or thirty. How many would we need? Um, and then the other thing is, um, I know with uh with the food and the cleaning supplies and the healthcare supplies that were donated. As part of this, as part of this effort. Would those be able to be replaced by donations? If people in the town wanted to donate to help offset some of that expense? Would we be able to accept donations and use them on those because they're materials, it's not staff?
Like product donations or or cash?
I would say probably cash so that the school could use its normal supply chain to buy the right things at at the best prices.
I um, yeah, because I wouldn't probably accept food donations.
Oh, certainly not, no, no, no.
Um, I I presume they could, uh, whether it would be enough to, uh, we're talking. Tens and tens of thousands of dollars, so. Um, yeah, toward that for sure, if it would pay for that, I.
Okay.
I have no idea, but um, again, it's up to you what you wish to um, accept as um, donation.
Yeah, I think is is that's kind of thing where as word gets out that, you know, that that was, all that was put towards public health effort. And it's not coming back. I can, I can easily see people asking, you know. Can we, can we make a donation? I would imagine any amount would help. Offset the cost the district has to lay out.
Um, and if we do have. Yeah, if we do have this budget discussion before our next meeting, any documents that we would review during it, if we could get it beforehand. It's hard to to look at them on the screen when we're trying to have conversations on the screen. So we could print them out and have them in front of us, that would be great.
I still think we need to go after CPA funds, but that's. I still think we need to go after CPA funds, but that's a whole, like you said, that's a whole other ledger.
I, I investigated that for you, and that is not possible.
Well, if we get the law changed, it would be possible.
Work on that, Alicia.
We have, we have to change the state law, Nancy, to state law.
I just got to get in touch with the right people. That's all. Okay, more budget comments for this budget update. All right. Chrissy, are there any questions coming in?
No, there are not.
Okay, thank you. All right. School activities update, Dr. Cabral.
Uh, I think I did that.
So, I guess my question on school activities update is, when are kids and teachers or whomever need to get into school to get things out of, they thought they were going to be gone for two weeks. There's stuff in the schools. How, when, where, how is that going to happen?
Okay. So, when we left school, we had two separate times that staff and students could go in and get materials. Obviously, nobody knew we would be out for the rest of the year. Nobody knew that. And the classrooms have all been disinfected and we have had very minimal, even essential staff in the buildings. So, as you know, that we discussed earlier in this meeting, we are having essential staff go back in the buildings starting next week. That does not include non-essential staff. So, we can't have teachers, we can't have Paris, we can't have any other staff members in there yet. Our town buildings are still closed. Town hall is still closed. So, I, I can't have any non-essential staff. It's not my call. That's a, that's a governmental call. So, certainly not until town hall is open and town buildings are open. Could we open our schools to people who are non-essential staff? And I, I personally have no insight into when that's going to be. I have no idea. So, unfortunately, I can't answer that question, but that's the reason that I can't answer that question. I have to wait to, for, for the opening of town buildings.
Okay. Thank you. Who else has a question on school activities update? Okay, because I know you went through, like, sort of the senior thing and other things are going on. But as far as we know, and, and again, everybody's in limbo right now. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I say one more thing? Sorry about that. One last thing is, so you know that the first week we were out, we, we did a medication dispensation. The nurses put that together and gave medications back to students that needed them. Obviously, not everybody needed that right away and, but there are still some medications. Even at the end of every school year, there are medications in school, EpiPens and things like that, that are maybe extras for a family. And so, we are, we do want to give those out. But again, now the nurses, on a couple of days at the end of May and the beginning of June, they haven't published those days yet. They are going to be doing that. That's already a plan that's been organized. And so, they will be doing that, but that's not until the end of May and the beginning of June. And we will not be have, I mean, unless town office is open by then, we will not be having people in the buildings. They're going to have to, they're, they're going to be figuring out a way that they can put those in a spot for people to pick up or, you know, pass it off in some way, deliver it to cars or what have you. Because we can't, for the same reason, we can't have people in public buildings while public buildings are ordered closed. So, but that is coming up and that, so that's different, I guess, right? Than just school supplies or what might be in someone's desk or locker. So, I just wanted to make note of that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now, the next item, discussion and possible vote on MOU from Eastern Educators Association. I believe we're going to cancel, table this, cancel it. What are we doing here, Alicia?
That's up to you. So, I sent you the MOU with the legal guidance that said I could sign it if it was all right with you. And they, she asked two questions and I answered those questions on the email for you. So, if it's, if that's fine with you, then I can sign it and that's all set. And if it's not, then we have to put it on the next meeting for a vote, for you guys to vote on it. Or if there are changes or concerns you have about it, we can go back and talk to the union about it. They have ratified it.
Does any, do any committee members have comments or any disapproval to this?
Nope.
No.
So, why don't we vote that Dr. Cabral can sign the MOU?
Second.
I make a motion. Yeah, okay. Michelle's second. Caroline?
Caroline O'Neil, yes.
Durant's, yes.
Aluka, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starg, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we're all set. All right. Public comment, anything up there, Chrissy? Superintendent notes?
Just a couple things. One is that I wanted to let you know, of course, we're still working on grants every day. We're still business as usual in some areas. And so, we did get a water grant through the facilities department. So, David Twombly has been working on that for me. We got a $3,000 water grant to replace some taps at Richardson Olmsted. So, we're going to do that as soon as we can. And I also want to point out that next week is teacher, or as we say in Easton, educator appreciation week. So, we have some things planned that I am not going to disclose here right now, but we are excited to appreciate them as much as we can. You can imagine the specific challenge. What we normally do is we, Chrissy and I and a lot of our central office staff, we, I remember from being an educator anyway, that the, the biggest gift for me would have been time. And so, we go in and for several years now, we take over lunch duty shifts for teachers so that they can have some extra time. And then I usually deliver some goodies or flowers or both to the upper elementary, the upper secondary schools. I can't do either one of those things now. So, we've got some things that we've been working on and we will announce those as next week goes on. But I wanted to say, for those people that are parents, for the school committee too, for anybody who might be watching, if you are a resident of this town, even if you don't have children in school, Chrissy and I, you've heard us talk about the extraordinary efforts that our educators have been doing. Just, you hear this year round from us. Easton is, Easton public schools is what it is because of the educators. And we encourage everybody in any way you can, if you haven't yet, next week, every week. But next week is a particularly poignant week to express your appreciation because it is teacher appreciation week. But like I said, educator appreciation. So, we're talking about everyone who really pitches in as a, as a team to help our students, whether it's our phenomenal custodians, lovely, wonderful power professionals. I don't want to start naming units because I'll forget one person and that would kill me. So, between nurses and specialists and special ed and counseling providers and administrators, everybody, it is a true team effort. And we have never seen that more than we have during this crisis. And so, I just would encourage people, implore people really, to maybe just take a moment and in some way, express appreciation for an educator or more that might be in your life, even if it's a family member, in, in any way that you can. It's been a very difficult road. And as you can imagine, there are people who are thinking what we're doing is too much. There are just as many people who are thinking what we're doing is too little. And all of the many people, who is the majority in the in-between, maybe we hear from 1% of them that are like, this is great because they're happy. And so, I'm just encouraging those people who are happy, let, let somebody know about that. Let, let an educator in one of our schools know that their efforts are being appreciated. And honestly, it's like a mom getting a pasta necklace. Just a simple thank you is really all that they need, and I know it will go a long way. And so, I just wanted to point out that that is, appreciate it always, but that next week is educator appreciation week.
Thank you. Assistant superintendent notes, Chrissy?
I said everything I needed to say at the beginning. Surprise!
School committee notes, Caroline?
Oh, I think I'm live. I did want to mention one thing, you know, I know it's terribly frustrating for people when we're not able to provide very specific information about timelines or even content of activities that may be coming up, particularly for our seniors who are, of course, terribly disappointed that some of the markers of this time of their lives have just been, they're either going to be radically altered or it won't be happening at all. But listening constantly to experts on television and social media and reading all of these unbelievable scientific reports, what I hear over and over and over again is, we can't really control our own timelines now. The virus is going to control the timelines. And, you know, our top priority has to be the health and safety of our children, of their families, of our staff, of course. So, I, I really would ask that people try to be patient and try to understand that we only have so much control in terms of what information we're able to provide at a given time or what kind of specifics. So, I just wanted to mention that, because the virus is in control now.
Thank you. Michelle?
Again, I am agreeing with Caroline is, there is a lot of frustration and I am one of those senior parents, so I certainly understand that perspective of it. But also, as a teacher, I understand that perspective of it. And there's just so many unknowns. We can't control it. We're not making up the rules that are governing how we have to operate right now. And we're all doing the best that we can with what we have at the moment and trying to make decisions with a whole lot of restrictions at hand time at this point. So, a, a shout out to all the educators of all levels that are mucking through all this and making it work for our students. And I just ask for patience for, from families to understand that there's, there's just so much that we, we can't control and, like Caroline said, that we can't give specifics on because we just don't know what the next ruling will be from the federal government, from the local Massachusetts government, how many people we're allowed to have in any given space. It, there's things that we can't control as much as we want everything to be firm and in place and as it always is. So, just try to bear with us.
Thanks, Michelle. And I agree with Caroline and Michelle that this COVID virus is just taken so much away from humanity. But we all want to be safe and protected. So, we're, I think everybody will do the best that they can. Jackie?
Yeah, I just want to thank again the educators that are going above and beyond, not just to provide the remote learning, but all the little extra spirit they're trying to provide with our kids and encouragement and games and chalk drawings and everything else that they're doing to try to keep the kids' spirits up when it's difficult not only to get used to this new normal, but also to be separated from their friends and their teachers. I really appreciate all the extra effort that's been put into keeping our kids happy and in somewhat of a normal routine.
Okay. Jen?
I think I, I agree with all four of you. So, you've covered a lot of my sentiments and said it very eloquently. I do just have a couple of updates and reminders for anybody on here. And I'm glad to see that we have a lot of participants who are, who are listening in and watching. So, we appreciate your, your attention to this and, and hanging in here. We've been on the line for, for two hours now. So, it's great to see you all. For anybody who has, who's part of the special ed parent community, if you have not collect, connected with the CPAC in town, they've been doing a lot of work and workshops and offering support for both students and families and kind of how to navigate some of those resources. So, Duke, there's a Facebook page that you can connect with and there are multiple Zoom calls twice a week with various members. And then for everybody, there's Teresa Skinner is doing a workshop next Tuesday. It's a Zoom call at 4:00 PM. It, you know, it's, again, it's, it's geared towards, she's the head of special services. It's geared towards special education. But the workshop or town, it's a town hall, was, that was a couple of weeks ago, was well-attended and had a lot of just information, resources and support for anybody, even if you don't have a student who's, who receives special ed services. And if you're just looking for good support and resources on overall social, emotional health and some of all the stress and the strain that we're all under, you may want to attend. And that information, I think, goes out widely to anybody in the district, but it's also on the CPAC Facebook page. So, good resources for anybody who's feels a little stressed and strained during this.
And I just, I, I forget to do this a lot, so I just want to note, CPAC is S-E-P-A-C. If you're, if you're looking it up, there's a lot of different, phonetically, there's a lot of different things you might search and not find. So, it's Special Education Parent Advisory. So, it's S-E-P-A-C if you're looking for that.
Great. Thank you. And I will be getting in touch with you ladies about a meeting to talk about the budget. So, I'll get back to you on that separately. Chrissy, there's a couple more questions?
Yes. One, just also to mention, Teresa Skinner just actually emailed me to say, mention the parent support website. So, we do have a wonderful parent support website that is connected to our COVID-19 information on the main website page. So, feel free to check that out for anyone that's looking for more resources. And then we also got an email from Paul Rohr, R-O-H-R. He, the title is budget suggestion. Watching on Facebook, not Zoom. So, sorry for the delay asking this question. For your budget discussions, I'd recommend you do a space analysis of how many students you can safely have in each classroom while also maintaining six-foot social distancing. Personally, personally, I'm unconvinced you'll be able to safely reopen at all in the fall. But if you do, that's clearly going to be a requirement or else you won't be able to stay open. It won't help to have bigger class sizes if they can't safely occupy the same room. Paul?
Thank you. Good point. All right. Are there any other comments or questions?
And Chrissy, you're, that's you checking your email as well, right?
Yeah, so whenever my phone's up, I've got a computer going and this, so I'm checking, because it comes in differently. It's the, again, the internet service in my house. So, I, yes.
Okay. So, if we email, so, okay, we're all set then with questions?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we don't miss anyone.
So, Happy Educators Week next week and education. And everybody, stay safe, wash your hands, keep your hands away from your face, do what you're supposed to do, social distance. We'll all get through, we'll all get through this together.
Can't we?
Well, I make a motion to adjourn at 8:11. Caroline?
Judging myself. Caroline O'Neil, I second the motion.
Okay, well, I was, okay.
And then I vote yes.
Yeah, okay.
Durant's, yes.
Aluka, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starg, yes.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, and good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.